Meeting to order for Monday, October 30th, 2023. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Anyone planning to do so? No. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before we go into public comment, I'd just like to take a minute to acknowledge our colleague, Mary Anderson. Just to say thank you to Mary for the wonderful job she did and all the hard work she put in for our board. She was a great collaborator. She reached out to so many different people in town and really tried to hit the ground running once she was elected. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work Mary did and thank her for her time. I don't know if other board members want to say anything.
I would echo that. Mary is, I have nothing but the utmost respect for her, and she did a great job running meetings and did an awful lot of work for this town, and she's owed a huge thank you. Often, we look at remarks and posts that are posted in places, and some of them are so disgraceful, it was, it was hard to read. But the amount of time and work that Mary Anderson spent for the town of Harwich, she's owed a thank you by every resident in this town.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say, for the short time that I spent on the board with Mary, it was truly an honor and a privilege to get to meet such a wonderful person, a person who's so giving of her time and energy. And yeah, you know, she'll be missed by me, and I'm just better off for knowing Mary. So thank you to Mary.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I echo that. I'd like to thank Mary, and she's a terrific human being and had offered a lot of work. I don't think anybody realizes how much work it is to be on the board, but we all appreciate it.
Thank you. So for public comments and announcements tonight, we have the Veterans Memorial Flag Dedication at Evergreen Cemetery. Robin?
Robin Kelly, the cemetery administrator. So in 2021, we went for the CPC article to have this Veterans Memorial Circle done. Of course, during COVID, we had a hard time getting materials, but it's finally finished. It is the American flag, and it's surrounded by all six branches of the military. We'll be dedicating it on November 11th at 10:30 because we want to raise the American flag at 11 o'clock. So we have the town band. I think they have over 30 pieces that will be there. We're going to arrange seating. Carolyn has, is going to allow us to bring some of these chairs out so that we can have some of the older people sit down because there's not a lot of, there's no seating actually. And we're expecting a very big crowd. So we have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, we have the, we have people from every branch of the service. We have three World War II veterans that will be participating in the ceremony. One's Judy's mom. She was a Riveter in the Coast Guard in World War II. And then we have Helen Sanford. She was a Navy wave. She's 98. And then we have Joe McAllaire, who is a wonderful gentleman who was also in World War II in the Army, and he will be giving our benediction. So we'll start off with the band. And then as we raise each flag for each branch of service, the town band will be playing their anthem. And they just learned the one for Space Force. They had to get permission to play it. And we do have one girl, that Ariel, she is based at Joint Base Cape Cod, and she is from Space Force, so she will be attending. So we're very excited. And then at the end, we're going to have a couple sing-alongs. We'll have sheets that we pass out to everyone. And at the end, we will have bagpipes playing Amazing Grace. We had one bagpipe guy, but now we've had quite several others asked if they could also participate. It will be filmed by Channel 18 and so that if you can't make it, you can see it later. And we'll also have drone footage of the dedication that will be put on the website.
Wow, that's great.
All right. Thank you so much. And we, you know, of course, we couldn't do it without the CPC or from, you know, we go before the Board of Selectmen to get approval for these projects, the town manager, and then we go through all of these different processes to get it, and then it goes to town meeting, and all the town people vote. We just want to thank everyone for all their help in us getting this done. And Shawnee Carroll is very excited about this as well, and we can't wait to the dedication. Let's just pray for nice weather.
I know. All right. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Robin, I don't want to step on the headline here, except that for those people who are only paying casual attention, it's all great that all this stuff happened, but it's in a different cemetery than they're used to.
Oh, yes.
It's in East Harwich.
Yeah. So, well, I met with the cert team and Police Department. So the Police Department's going to put out their little sign that allow, you know, to tell everyone that it's going to be at Evergreen in East Harwich. And when you come up, you have to come in from the cemetery road entrance. So they'll have blocked off the 39 and the 137. There's many entrances that enter the cemetery. So as they come in, they'll have all the cars pointing out so that we don't create congestion. We will have handicap parking for people. We'll come all the way around where the circle is, and we'll be parking people who need to be closer to the area where the dedication is. So it's just, and then next year, we'll have the dedication of the Revolutionary War and Civil War Memorial, so that will be even better.
Great work.
Thank you so much.
It's a lot of work you do, Robin. Thank you.
Great job, Robin.
I also just want to mention an event at Put On By Care, Creating a Responsible Environment over at 204 Sisson. It's not on our agenda tonight, it's the last minute. It's November 9th from 8:30 to 2:00 at the 204, and it is the Rising Tide of Plastic Pollution Sustainable Business Solutions. So it looks like a great event. If you have an opportunity, you should register for it. The registration ends on 11/7, and the fee is $30. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Please, Joe. Please, of course.
This additional announcement came in from the Monomoy Regional School District regarding the strategic plan for 2024 through 2027. There is a strategic planning survey that's available at surveymonkey.com. You type in the word Monomoy. Additionally, there is a final focus group that will meet on Wednesday, November 1st at 6:00 p.m. It is a Google Meet, and any parents, caregivers, students, community members, and business leaders are encouraged to share their input. Again, that final focus group, Wednesday, November 1st at 6:00 p.m., and you can learn more at monomoy.edu. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank all the residents who came out to our office hours last week. I'd also like to thank Mr. McCaskill for stepping in and being my partner in crime at that, at that meeting. You know, we had 20-plus people there the other night, and I just think that is incredible. The numbers are growing. It started with three or four, then it moved to 15, 16, 17, and now we're at 20-plus people last week. It was a great discussion, and from what I, from where I sit and I see it, this is extremely positive, and it will continue either by myself or with one of my other colleagues up here. I do want to remind the public the reason for doing this, because it was brought up at the meeting. It gives people a very comfortable and welcoming place to express their views and ask their questions. A lot of people aren't comfortable standing up here at this microphone or at town meeting and asking questions or giving us their feedback. So I want that to be the driving reason why I think, or why I hope more people will come out and share with us. We're not providing solutions. There's no, there's no fixes. It's a place for me and whomever else joins me to listen and learn and become part, more part of the fabric of our town and develop relationships with our townspeople. I think it's also important to mention some of the topics that were brought up for full transparency, so if people weren't there, they know what we're talking about. We discussed a great deal about Pine Oaks Village. We discussed a little bit about free cash. We discussed a little bit about the Wix and Dock project. Some interesting questions regarding personal property rights, and a few housing questions were drizzled in there. And I will be getting with Cara at the 204 to schedule my next meeting, office hours, and that will be announced probably next Monday night at our select board meeting, which is item B on our public comment and announcement. Next select board meeting will be Monday, November 6th, 2023.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
New business. Oh, sorry, public comment announcement. I'm breezing right through that.
Hi, this is Chris Joyce, representing Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging. And also, as participants in this event, I want to talk about briefly, we're going to have a Veterans Grab and Go lunch on November 9th, 11:30 to 12:30. And participating with us is Shawnee Carroll, the Vets Agent in Chief LeBlanc's Department, the Fire Department. So we have meals for up to 50 veterans, and they register by calling 508-432-5050. And we want to sell out. Of course, it's free, but we want to sell out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda?
Thank you, Linda Sebula. Just making sure that people know that the Traffic Safety Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning, 9:30 at the Police Department, and one of the presentations will be the traffic study for Pine Oaks 4.
Oh, great.
So if anyone would like to attend, we'd love to see you.
Thank you, Linda.
I'll go first. Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. And just a reminder that tomorrow, which is Halloween, we have our drive-through at 5:30 at the Community Center. It is open to everyone. We encourage costumes of both the adults and the children, but that happens at 5:30. Then on November 3rd, we are having our Science Fire and Ice Show free in the Community Center. That starts at 6:00 p.m. on November 3rd. And all these will be in our newsletter, but I like to let the public know here as well. And then on November 9th is our Teen Clothing Swap. So you can drop off the clothes prior to November 1st through 8th, get your tickets, and then on the 9th, everyone can come in and shop. And we do have tickets available for people who might not have clothes to drop off but need some new things. So all of those events are free, and we're hoping everyone comes over. And I do know the library is doing something, so you can swing right through and make it a whole event here in Harwich and keep our children safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Well, members of the board, I'm Judith Ford with the South Harwich Meeting House, and I'm making an important announcement about a concert that we're having on Sunday afternoon this coming. You have Jenny S. Strenger is going to be playing the violin. This violinist has played in almost every concert hall in the world. She's world-renowned and absolutely just an incredible, if you, you've almost never heard a violin until you've heard her. So I want to make this announcement. We're having incredible programming at the Meeting House. We worked with Chris Joyce with the Council on Aging and had an incredible jazz concert, and we just finished an outrageous Halloween event yesterday, or on Saturday. But this concert is going to be one not to miss. I want to announce it because it's the first in our series of 2023-24. We're offering actually four concerts for the price of three for these people that come from all over the world, all over the country, and the chamber in the Meeting House is not something to be missed. The acoustics in there are beyond anywhere on Cape Cod and well beyond. It's going to be this Sunday afternoon on November 5th at 3:00 p.m. We have a small reception afterwards to meet the performers, but it is an incredible, incredible opportunity, and I would encourage everyone in Harwich, whether they've been to Chamber before or whether they are familiar with it and love it, please come to the South Harwich Meeting House at 3:00 on Sunday. Thank you for the chance to announce.
Great. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Patrick?
Hello, Patrick, out in East Harwich. A follow-on with the discussion about youth programs and within the community of Harwich. Are you aware of Cape Cod Community Rowing? It's shared beach space on Long Pond. We have both youth from 12 years old to 18 years old rowing programs, learn how to row, advanced skills rowing, competitive rowing. We also have masters rowing. So I want to put that out as a community announcement that there is youth activity possible. Our season just ended last week, Friday, so we're in this interim period between, you know, fall and spring, so we are looking for a place to do in-house training, say erging and specific body training, and would love to cooperate with the town to encourage youth participation, okay?
Thank you.
Community, Cape Cod Community Rowing is the organization on Long Pond. And we've been in association with Eric Beebe and the rec before, so they know about us, but I think it's worthy of a public comment, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is that it for public comment and announcement? Onto new business discussion on what?
May I make one more comment?
Yeah.
So I was at the Community Center Saturday. This was in the grounds. It says caution, pesticides application, keep off. There's a picture of a child, a parent, and a dog. And I'm really concerned that the town of Harwich is endangering the health of our residents, our occupants, whether it's a child, whether it's a dog, whether it's a grasshopper. Why is the town applying pesticides to public land and endangering our health? I found another one of these just outside the door here about a month ago. I turned it into the Board of Health and said, why are you doing this? There was no response. So I am greatly concerned that pesticides are a true health risk to everything alive. So please, let's, let's pay attention to what we're doing to our public.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you, Patrick.
I'll leave this with you. My name, my email, my phone number's on it.
Perfect.
I'd love to have an answer why the town. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you as well, okay?
New business, discussion on whether a special election will be called pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 10, to fill the unexpired term set to expire in May 2024. So discussion by board members?
Yeah, I just want to, would start with maybe just some clarification. Normally, we talk about filling a position or a seat once we've accepted the resignation of. I noticed that we're not accepting the resignation. Is that because it's a board member? I know that there is a specific state law. I can't remember if we've ever done it before on finance committee or a selectman, but...
Joe?
It is because state law, it requires that elected officials, resignations are accepted upon receipt by the clerk. So that's a required action. Soon as the resignation was filed, it was, it went into effect immediately.
Isn't that law, though, does that law also pertain in general, any resignation of anybody just has to be filed with the clerk?
Correct. For, for any folks that take an oath, generally speaking, for their resignation to be effective, they have to be on file with the clerk.
So it just asks the board if we, we take up sooner rather than later, if we want to go through that process. If we're not going to do it now, why would we, why would we do it at all?
Exactly.
And I'll wait.
Well, right.
I'll wait on the, my comments on the election.
Jeff?
Honestly, Madam Chair, I'd like to hear the rest of the board's comments.
Okay. Don?
I was going to punt back to you guys.
So Emily has outlined dates, obviously, and impacts in terms of holidays, et cetera. So when you look at those, those dates, she asks us that if, obviously respectfully requests that should you pursue a special election, you set the date no later than January 23rd, and the earliest legal date would be January 2nd. So sort of current period of making a decision on whether or not we want to move forward with the special election. I mean, other than that, she's got other specifics in here for us to consider in terms of, like, for example, if you were to choose the date that impacts town clerk's office for after Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving's not a legal holiday, so they would have to be open for that. So, you know, just different considerations we should make. And then, of course, the overall cost, which she estimates at about $20,000. So does, does anyone want any further input? I think Emily's memo is pretty thorough.
No, I would say that the memo was great. The charts were great. Everything above the packet for this was great. I don't, and I'll just throw it out there, I don't see the point, given the time, the time that we're up against, the time that it would take a resident to pull the papers. And if we went with the second, they'd have to have the paperwork back in within two weeks. If we went with the ninth, it would be three weeks. I know when I decided to run for the board, it was a lot longer thought process and conversation than that, and the thought of being thrown into it when we're preparing for town meeting with a bunch of information we've already talked about seems a little daunting to me. The $20,000 is just the clerk's office cost, doesn't include DPW. I did notice that it was not in the budget for the clerk's office, and I would assume it's probably not in the budget for the DPW. Not saying that we can't come up with the money, but I, for now, am against having a special election.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff?
Sure. So I just want to be clear. My hesitation in wanting to throw my feelings out there, my thoughts out there is, in waiting to hear what everybody else has to say, is because it's my first go-around, I'm not really sure how intense January through May gets for our town employees, for, for everybody involved. So if, if there can be some insight for me while we're having this discussion, because at the end of the day, I kind of did the math, we're looking at about three and a half months prior to that, the next election. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the value in it. It's not easy to find. So I'm, I'm, I'm just wanting to hear some, some more info, maybe from...
Yeah, I think, I think that's a fair point. I mean, it is crunch time from January on. It's crunch time really from now on.
Now on, right.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, Michael. I don't know. The whole point of the charter was to have five selectmen. The last time something similar to this happened was when Chief Peterson passed away, and it was a similar timeline, and they, they held the election. In terms of what goes on, you're looking at staff, I'm looking at us, and our timeline for the warrant really begins in earnest in December, and it really takes off in January forward. So I wouldn't be comfortable without being, having a full board, but that's just my opinion.
Well, on that note, the last time I recall was Stephen Ford.
You and me.
So...
That was two months.
And, but that was an eight, that was an eight-month term, pretty much.
Eight-month term, yeah.
Right? So that was a longer term.
Yeah.
Back to the point of...
September election, I believe.
Yeah. Right, exactly. Joe, did you want to weigh in on anything or just?
Sure. A few points, first of all. As the clerk expertly pointed out in the memo, that covers everything. You'd be operating under Chapter 41, Section 10, which says you may call the election. So there's no compulsion for the board. There is a provision, however, if more than 200 voters petition and demand it, you must call it. So there is that concept of if you want to have control over the process. I think the question of how intense does January to May get has been answered. It depends on how intense budgeting can be for you.
Thank you.
Yep. One more thing. We also don't know who potentially could jump in the race. If it's a seasoned veteran, somebody who's been here before, obviously, that would, that would be a different circumstance versus if it's somebody who has not had the, the time in town government on the select board. I, I feel that that would be a whole different circumstance. So I just wanted to get that out there, how I'm thinking of this.
Yeah. I think, you know, if we're not, I guess my question is, are we comfortable making a decision tonight? Do we want another week to think about this? Do we have that votes maybe taken? I'm not quite sure. Just discussion. But I think whatever we do, we need to make that decision quickly for Emily's sake and her staff's sake, so. Want to hold off till next week and then make a final decision? Because this does say discussion.
We can absolutely vote, even though it says discussion.
Yeah.
They definitely lighten that restriction that if it's on an agenda, it's reasonably assumed that you can take an action. I'm pretty set, given the timeline and how long this person will serve and, and not costing the town the $25,000 roughly that it's going to cost us. And I think that this board could, can certainly get through it with four members and not five. It's an unfortunate resignation. If it was eight months or a longer period of time, I would, I would probably be for it, but for the three and a half months roughly by the times this happens, and then the thought of rushing someone to pull papers and rushing someone to, to run does not intrigue me. So I think I'm comfortable making a decision tonight if the board chooses to.
One more thing. And if I'm not mistaken, that person, if they wanted to continue forward and grab a three-year seat, they would be campaigning as in their three, three-month stint, pretty much the whole time.
Yeah. They'd have to run again, right?
They'd run again. Okay. Thank you.
We all do.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, is there a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, it would have to be a special. It would have to be a positive motion, correct, Joe?
Correct.
To hold the election.
Doing nothing accomplishes not having anything.
I do not have a positive motion.
All right, okay. Leave it.
I'll make a motion that we hold a special election.
Anyone second it?
Just for the record.
Okay. All right. I guess that's, that's that. B.
So Madam Chair, if I could have failed to gain a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion on Monomoy Regional School District Regional Agreement Assessment and Formula Funding. And if you want to come up to the table, and also Charles, I just want to make mention of Charles. I hope I'm not messing up your name, but I'm going to give it a go. I've said it before, but Gruska? Oh, great. Okay. So we'd like to thank Charles for asking us to put this back on our agenda because as we went through town meeting in May, we talked about the fact that we had to have some, some real discussions, and Charles brings a wealth of knowledge to our board. He has 34 years of experience as an educator in the Wachusett Regional School District, including being a principal in K through 5 in Holden for 10 years, also early childhood center in Wachusett Regional District as a principal, and a principal at the Paxton Center School, K through 8 for 14 years. And I, from your resume, note that you've lectured extensively on parenting and human relations. So that's where we get our agenda topic this evening, and it's an important one, and we've all been talking about the difficulties that we face, and we thank all of you to come. Scott, Meredith, Michael, you're probably sick of seeing us so soon again, but we're glad you came this evening. And I really, who wants to start?
Well, I guess I started the conversation. Charles Gruska, 6 T. Berry Ave., Harwich. My hobby is school budgets, or one of my hobbies is school budgeting.
Needed to get out more.
I think I, I developed that from my work as a school principal, learning the importance of the school budget in terms of the whole operation and what, what we can offer as an educational experience to kids. And my experience taught me that while it's extremely important that the quality of And my experience taught me that while it's extremely important that the quality of people that work with kids, there is a limit to what anybody can provide to kids based on the resources that are provided to them. It's like saying you could have the eight best police officers you could possibly find in town, but if you need 24 of them to handle the needs of the town or you don't provide them the equipment they need to do their job, then that quality, the service they can provide to the town is diminished. So, for years, I first advocated as a school principal for budgets in my own town that I worked in, in the district I worked in, which was a regional district. Wachusett District was the first regional school district and is still the largest geographically in the state, consisting of five towns. When I retired, I continued to advocate in my own community. I moved here from Worcester. And Worcester was in very dire straits in terms of its school budgeting, and it was showing in what I thought was the caliber of the educational experience in that community. And so, I passionately tried to work with others to get the powers that be to look at school budgets and enhance them. Worcester was and still funding very much at the minimum local net contribution, minimal school spending level. And I paid tuition for my kids to go to other schools, one from grade one on, the other from kindergarten on, in addition to my taxes because I didn't have faith in the system that it could provide the educational experience that I wanted for my kids. And so, that's where I get this advocacy for school budgeting. Well, I moved to Harwich 2015 after regionalization had taken place. I'm not a part of that process. I don't have the knowledge and background of many of you in the room as to everything that went into that processing. But of course, one of the first things that I wanted to know about was the school budget in the Montemoy district. I didn't have anyone that was going to be in the district. I just wanted it as a citizen feeling the importance of the education program to this, as a service within the community. And I was pleasantly surprised and actually astonished to find out how good the school budget was in the Montemoy Regional School District. I felt that way in 2015, 16. I feel that way today based on the latest budget that has been passed. One of the few communities that I can think of that is meeting all of the identified needs of the district based on the input of the administration, with one exception this year, a few thousand dollars' worth of worn-out furniture at the high school. I just came from a high school school council meeting. I serve on the school council, and we still haven't been able to take care of that. But outside of that and every other need, and there are very few, I think, school districts that can make that claim. Mr. McCaskill, Dr. Carpenter might contradict me on that, but I think they would, their experience would.
I think you meant Mr. McMillan, not me.
McMillan, I'm sorry. Max, I'm sorry.
Just for the record.
Sorry, Mr. McCaskill.
He might contradict you as well.
This is meant to be a mutual compliment. So, what I saw happening, though, was I saw the difficulty, because I follow the process very closely, both at the school committee level and then when it comes to the higher level, when it comes to the select board's level, comes to town meeting level. And I could see the difficulty the select board has had over the years in dealing with the budget assessment figures brought forth by the administration to meet their needs. And in the initial years, I have to be frank with you, the figures that the board was seeing were not figures that reflected all of the identified needs of the district. They were a set of figures that reflected the administration's weeding out priorities within the identified needs of the building administrators. I am thrilled in the last couple of years that the school committee has established a process called Budget Workshop, where each of the directors and principals comes before the school committee with the request that they filed with the school administration and defends their requests and explains their requests. Perhaps the most transparent school budgeting process I've ever seen, definitely, and from what I know, probably anywhere. I would have craved that opportunity as a school principal to come before the school committee with my request, but it was always left to whatever the business manager and the superintendent and powers that be decided. That's what was going to move forward. So, the committee was not always, the select board was not always aware, fully, I don't think, of all the needs. And I pressed the school committee for that, and they responded and have that process. And so, we know in the last two years, outside of that bit of furniture at the high school, every identified need has been met by Harwich and Chatham in funding its schools. I think because, I think the funding has a lot to do with why the district has such a fine reputation. I have a grandchild who's attending the high school on school choice. I have a grandchild who just graduated, went through the high school on school choice. I was thrilled that they went to Montemoy. They lived in the Nussett district, but their choice was Montemoy. And from the data, as I listen and listen closely, we have more kids really wanting to come into Montemoy than we have kids who live in our district that want to go out, with an exception, it's very appropriate, which is the technical school, which is an ideal school for a number of kids in our town and all. What I could see, what I foresee developing is something I've seen happen in the school district I worked in. It's happened in other school districts, regional school districts. And that is that eventually, the budget gets based on the affordability level of the town that has the lowest level of affordability. And what happened in my district, and several times, individual towns in the district came forward because they weren't getting enough of a vote to pass the budget. It was a five-town district, and they needed four towns to approve. And there were always, it seemed, two towns that couldn't match the level of affordability being presented by the administration. So, what would happen is to get a positive vote, you'd have to go with whatever the least affordable town could set as its assessment limit. And that would then drive the assessments for the remainder of the district. It forced some, it prompted some of the towns to actually come forward and ask the state if they could pay out of their own pocket, if they could add to the school budget and contribute that money to the students that were being served by the district from their town. Because their town could afford it, but they weren't allowed to fund schools. And they saw their kids were losing services. They saw the class sizes were increasing. They saw conditions that are very different from what we see in Montemoy. In my district, I believe anyone would give their right arm to be able to be an educator in the Montemoy district because of the resources that are provided. Definitely, anyone in my former community of Worcester would. And I was actually floored that there were school districts like Montemoy that still had the resources being provided that had long ago disappeared from where I was. So, my concern was how is this going to play out in the future? And what I could really see is the time is going to come, I think, when Harwich is just going to be up against the wall financially in terms of being able to meet. Then now, I would like Dr. Carpenter and Mr. McMillan to address that further and give their opinion. But I think somewhere down the line, and I've just come from a school council meeting, made aware of the fact that we are in a negotiating year with our teachers, and that's maybe over 50% of the budget impacted by salaries. We're having a hard time getting teachers and filling positions because of the housing and affordability situation. Where I think the school committee is committed, as they should be, to try to get some parity between pays in the Montemoy district and pays in neighboring districts. And there are still a number of other needs that are going to come forward that don't exist at the current time. So, down the road, what I, and actually, my concern is much or more for Chatham than for Harwich because Harwich is really in the driver's seat, in reality, of the ultimate school budget in that Harwich figure controls the figure for the district. Where Harwich sets its budget, if Harwich needs to lower the assessment that's recommended, that means Chatham has to lower its assessment as well, which means an even greater reduction in the school budget. And I can foresee a time coming where the folks in Chatham are going to be saying, we're, our class sizes are increasing. We lost this program. We don't have these courses. We don't have all these services and activities, and they aren't going to be able to do anything about it. And I share that thinking with you because I think the challenge is how do people in Harwich convince people in Chatham?
I think that's a good segue to say from, as we watch numbers going different ways, and yet, this has been fairly solid. Maybe that's the point where we look to you all to talk to us about. When you look at these staggering numbers of, you know, Harwich is paying $49,119,703 higher than FY11, and Chatham has $17,163,327 lower than FY11. Those numbers really resonate. So, I guess we'll turn it over to you, Scott.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, first, I just, while I have the moment and Charles is here, I want to just also publicly thank Charles for how involved he has been on the school side. You know, so I know that Charles was at a school council meeting just before this. I mean, we have a community member who's served for years on the high school school council. And I mean, it's just great to see community members get involved in anything, you know. And I really appreciate, you know, Charles's involvement. I think when it comes to the school district's budget, you know, the mantra I've always had, and Meredith's probably tired of me saying this, but at the end of the year, our job, you know, as superintendent, business manager, the school committee is really to provide the best educational program we possibly can while being great stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And I think that's what Montemoy has done since I've got here. You know, I think, a thing I greatly appreciate about how we operate as a district. We meet routinely with the town managers and finance directors. We were meeting with Joe and Jill earlier today. And, you know, just to kind of share where we're at, where the towns are at, and try to, you know, make sure that we're able to, quote unquote, land the plane within the wherewithal of both of our towns. I do agree, and I think we all know in the room, that, you know, that Chatham has had more fiscal wherewithal in the time that I've been here than, you know, than Harwich. But I also think that, you know, even with some of the challenges that, you know, fiscally that Harwich has had in the past decade, we've been able to maintain that excellent program that, you know, that Charles has set. I know that many of us here, including myself, have had children go through the Montemoy system, and they've been well-served. You know, my kids went through that school district and got to where they want it to be in college and life. And I have been sincerely blessed by what our educators were able to give, you know, my own children and what I've seen them, you know, give to the children of Harwich and Chatham and those that choice into the district. You know, and when it comes to the regional agreement, we, you know, I would say, in regions, virtually every region in the state, bar two, have the assessment is based on foundation enrollment. You know, so it's, you know, so almost every regional school district out there has assessments based on foundation enrollment, including ours. And I think, and ours, with the change that happened a couple of years ago, is one of these fringe ones that has a little twist where, at least at the elementary level, there's something in there that, where both towns are paying for their own elementary schools. And one of the reasons I came out as superintendent and advocated for that, it was pretty clear on watching Chatham Elementary's enrollment shrink at a much faster rate than Harwich Elementary, that we were seeing a situation that was beginning to play out where there was a subsidy that was happening at the elementary level. And I give the town of Chatham and the voters and taxpayers in Chatham a lot of credit that when we went to the town meeting with that change in the regional agreement, you know, Chatham is picking up, you know, an extra roughly three-quarter of a million dollars per year. And that is anticipated to grow over time to help defray that, which has allowed Harwiches to come down. So, there's a twist in there that favors Harwich in that, you know, than just going straightforward foundation enrollment across the board. And I'm also sensitive to the fact that when we went to the Chatham town meeting for that vote, it wasn't exactly a, you know, everybody stand up and say, "I'm in agreement." You know, you have, you know, the, you know, some of the voices from, you know, from yesteryear. Because as I, well, it was before my time, you know, my understanding is the vote to bring regionalization together was a pretty close one in Chatham. And, you know, so you had murmurs of that in the past. And, you know, I and others got up to the mic and just said, hey, you know, we've got to realize that, you know, that this regionalization that happened has benefited families and children in both of our towns. It was good for both of us, and, you know, let's not look back. Let's look, you know, let's look forward. So, you know, so I think there has been a lot of great to come out of this. I understand, you know, where Charles has come from and thinks these, you know, it's, you know, I think there's, you know, there are a couple regional agreements out there. I think specifically Mount Greylock and Manchester Essex that have a different approach. But we have to keep in mind that, you know, those likely came together years and years ago at that approach. And I doubt, you know, of course, it's hard to say, you know, look back and say, okay, what would have happened? But I myself would wonder if a Manchester Essex agreement was there with that funding formula, would you not have gotten the 30 votes if you go back? You know, so, you know, so I think it's easy sometimes to go and say, hey, yeah, I like that, that regional agreement. Wouldn't that be great here? But, you know, but the agreements that we have, or the agreement that we have kind of came about, you know, in conversations and for a regional agreement to change. There's a conversation ultimately that would need to happen with select boards and select boards. And there would have to be enough support behind that in both communities to get that regional agreement to change.
Thank you, Scott. Michael, did you want to?
I guess the only thing, I mean, I don't, nothing substantive to add except to see, so there's two reasons why the assessment goes up every year. One is because our budget goes up because of, you know, the needs of districts and inflation and so on. And the other reason, you know, it gets complicated for real is because of foundation enrollment. And as Chatham's goes down faster than Harwich's, Harwich owns a bigger part of the pie. So, although you have a lower foundation enrollment, you're responsible for a higher portion of who's left. But that, so those are numbers we can model. So, we can look forward, you know, I mean, with some, you know, expectations that the numbers won't be right because we don't know exactly how the numbers are going to play out. But we could, we can look forward and see what the trends are like and how that might play out. We did see a large drop a couple of years ago, significant shift. However, the last couple of years, it's been more level, it's been more steady. And, but we do have, you know, we can see what enrollment's like right now. We could map that out five, 10 years and see how it's changing, get a sense of the magnitude of the problem we're facing. Because, you know, we're talking about, there's a big problem coming, but we could get an idea of what that problem is. And I think that would help in forming discussions. It might be if, you know, we did want to take the work forward. One thing to do might be to model how an agreement will play out in the next five to 10 years based on the version of the information we do have. And at the very least, that would give us something to monitor against or to look at how other alternatives might be, might differ in the amount of the difference.
Meredith, did you want to?
Just, I think it, you know, it can't hurt to start the conversation. You know, there's nothing that I think we can do to change anything for this year, you know, our next budget cycle, because we're, like you, we've already kind of begun it. But just to try to start having the conversation with Chatham as things are shifting and our enrollment's shifting from town to town. enrollments shifting from town to town, maybe if we can do some sort of projection over the next five-ish years, just to see what that might look like, could help just support the conversation. You know, and then as the school committee, we love that we have the budget workshop and that we're so transparent about trying to meet the needs of the students in the district, but then also trying to be fiscally responsible. So, we're, we're in it.
No, it's, and it's never easy. No one ever wants to talk about budgets and money, I mean, anywhere, wherever you are, so.
Yeah.
It's his hobby.
I know. Charles, it's kind of making me worry.
I'm still processing.
Well, before I go to board members, Joe, did you have anything else you wanted to add into?
I'd rather you go to board members.
Okay.
And if I could, only because, you know, I think that's where we're at, is what is the sense of the board? What are you hearing from your constituents? Because as everyone said, we're already in a process, but we also react to conditions that were seen and unseen. So for me, I think it's more informative to hear where you folks are at through your constituents.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rather than start with a statement, let me ask a question. What do the classrooms look like in Chatham Elementary School right now? How many grades, how many classes per grade do you have, and how many kids in those classes do you have?
So, I'm sure Michael can pull it up if he's got the computer here, but most grades in Chatham have two classrooms with students. The class sizes in Chatham are roughly the same at the moment at Harwich Elementary.
Not in the aggregate, I'm looking for the aggregate, each grade.
All right. Michael, Harwich, Harwich Elementary has, has five classrooms per grade level, and we're seeing signs at the lower grade level in kindergarten, at the lowest grade level, being kindergarten, of us maybe not even being able to fill, fill four classrooms at Harwich. So Harwich, the Harwich enrollment has, has in the last, in the last year, the last two years, started to drop off at the youngest grade levels. Again, it's, it's, you know, two years is hard to go and say, "Okay, is this a trend?" Or, you know, just, you know, because you'll have a, you know, a school district like, like our, you know, like our school district, where you might end up with a bumper crop of kids in a grade level. And, you know, at current, you know, what are the current ninth graders, there was a bumper crop of children, you know, if you go back in time, that were, that were born. We seem to have a low point in Harwich. Chatham's also been dropping off too, and, you know, and those are conversations we've been having at the school committee and beyond on, you know, affordability of housing, and how do we support families to be in our two towns.
I really just looking for a number, not a discussion. I mean, the total enrollment of Chatham versus the total enrollment of Harwich.
The total enrollment of Chatham is one hundred and forty-nine students at the elementary school, or do you mean?
Yeah, the elementary school.
Elementary school, and then at Harwich is four hundred and sixty-six.
Okay. I get everything you're saying. I truly.
Please move the mic next to him.
That was one hundred and forty-nine at Chatham Elementary and four hundred and sixty-six at Harwich.
There's a force above us here. Thank you. Part of what, I mean, because you've heard me say this for a number of years, if you're going to be modeling, you have to also assume changes to the structure. It isn't all rearward-facing. We're trying to really push for affordable housing with, between the Marsline property and Pine Oaks, it, that could substantially change the outlook too, but not in a positive way in terms of how we share. Charles has got a really good point, but it's not a point that anybody on this board wants to go down. I don't want to hold the kids hostage in order to get some greater parity in the contribution level, because it's not fair. You're looking to maintain the same quality level, but the disparity level, I mean, even one of the selectmen in Chatham noted how blessed they are because they're doing really well. And the proportion that they're paying is going down, regardless of what you're saying with the possibility that the lower grades went. Right now, if every one of those kids from Chatham were to move up to the middle school and into the high school, and our proportion were to move up from our elementary school to the middle school to Harwich, it is only going to exacerbate the current circumstances. Nobody ever predis, I know we had a little disagreement in the newspaper, I know that within the community, there was a substantial discussion about, "Yeah, well, we're not too disparate." And by the time the actual agreement came into place, it was disparate and kept, it's gotten worse. And I think what Charles is trying to do is try to figure out some way, so we don't have the discussion at some point of saying, "We cannot afford this at this level anymore." And that if we're going to have any discussion, I have to at least say this, we should be starting like next week to talk about next year. If we can't do anything for this year, that's been the argument for three years now, is, "Well, I can't really do too much about this year." We wound up doing a Band-Aid, where each town assumed the responsibility for their own elementary schools. But I said then, I'm going to say now, that doesn't help because those kids grow older and they wind up becoming part of the general population, and that, we're not going to wind up saying that, "Well, you go to your middle school, we'll go to ours." That isn't possible, that isn't even possible. I mean, so unless we want to start exploring some more bigger picture things, like either what Charles is talking about, or gaining a new partner with it, into the mix, this is not really a trajectory that we can afford in the long run. It just isn't. Unless you're going to presume that our enrollment just collapses in the elementary school and it gets really close to Chatham, which I don't see. I don't see that happening.
Jeff?
Nothing at this time.
Okay.
I reserve my right. Hold on.
I thought that the projecting out makes a lot of sense, but the projecting out is going to just give us something. I don't know how much it's going to give us, to Don's point. The only change I would make in that is some maybe pushing for Pine Oaks and the Marsline affordable housing projects. Some of the numbers that have been given us to in the initial stage without the Marsline property, which is a one that the town owns and the town is probably going to put a project on, some of the numbers from the proposed Pine Oaks project is up to two hundred and fifty kids. How do you project out that? And it's going to take, you know, multiple years to build said project, and you don't have a crystal ball, nor do I. So I think back kind of to Don's point as to where things are now. And we have had this conversation, this is a great recap for Jeff, the rest of us have had this conversation many times. The process is a minimum of two years. So how long do we want to talk about this and project out? Because I think to Charles's point, there is going to hit a time where the voters may say, "We can't support that budget." Right now, we've been blessed because we've had overwhelming support in the budget, but there are a fair amount of residents that are questioning that and want to see the discussions start for the change. So with all of that, we need to start that discussion on a higher level with the town of Chatham to see if at least the two boards and administrators can agree to continue to have that discussion. Otherwise, it's an article on each town meeting floor, one fails and we go to DESI.
Right.
But I'm not that interested in talking about it for three more years. I'd rather start working on it.
Yeah, and I think to that point, I think that we do need to start having real conversations and communicating town to town. But I also point out that Chatham is also making some headway in housing initiatives as well, and so like we, we need to look at those numbers too, because what does that mean, you know, on their side of the coin? So I think that all of it is difficult, because they're just projections. You know, we don't know hardcore, but we need to start looking at them and we need to. I think the biggest problem we all know, the biggest problem is that, you know, we don't have the same income, and we also have a sewer project, and, you know, we also have a declining population all over the Cape because of housing. So those are our three pink elephants in the room that all of them need to be addressed. I think, you know, the further we can get along in the housing discussion, and the more real numbers we know, then, you know, Michael's projections have some more of a face to them. But it is difficult. I mean, you're kind of playing with sand here, trying to mold it, you know?
And one of the challenges with, with projecting too far is that you project more than five years. Those kindergartners haven't been, haven't been born yet.
Right.
Right.
You know, so it's, and that's, you know, I, you know, I wouldn't have thought ten years ago when I, no, it's eleven, eleven years ago, when I started here, that, that I'd be in a position of wondering, should we have three or four sections of kindergarten at Harwich Elementary School when we had six full sections of kindergarten at Harwich Elementary School just ten years ago?
Right. Yeah. Oh, I know. Jeff?
Yeah, a couple of points, if I may, Madam Chair. Thank you, and thank you all for being here. I have two kids in the system, seven and a five-year-old, so I'm, I'm in it, and I've had, my two older boys have gone through Montomoy. My oldest son was one of the first grad, was in the first graduating class of Montomoy High, so I've seen the whole thing. I'll echo the sentiments of Don, Michael, Julie. I think it's important that we begin this conversation now. For me, modeling is not a viable option for me. Modeling, I, in my past history, I haven't really seen accurate modeling. I believe it's inherently inaccurate, and as time goes on, errors multiply exponentially. So I'm not, I'm just putting it out there, I'm not a big fan of modeling. This is also a very, it's a multi-variable issue, which all leads back to the school system. As Michael mentioned, our housing development, as Julie mentioned, the sewer. It all impacts our school system, and I, the thing I like most that I've heard so far is I don't want to hold our kids hostage at all. And I think, as Charles mentioned, our, our school system is second to none. Credit needs to be given where credit is due. I thank you all for providing a school system that we can all be proud of. But is it unreasonable to ask the question, is the current agreement and arrangement sustainable long-term? I don't believe it's an unreasonable question, and I believe that's the question that we need to truly focus on, is, is this unsustainable for our town long-term? And is our partner and our neighbor in this willing to put the value into the school system, most importantly, and come to the table and have conversations with us? That'll probably be challenging and difficult, but I think we all want the same thing. So if we can all agree upon the fact that the kids are the most important aspect of this agreement, I'm hopeful. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Jeff. I think, I think that we can all agree that what we need for the next step is something more concrete, like a true discussion, whether it's a joint meeting with both select boards at a school committee meeting, or something to that. Just to sort of open that dialogue, we don't all know our counterparts, and I think that's an important piece of the communication as well, right? You know, we all need to talk about what's real. What are their concerns? What are our concerns? Ours are pretty obvious. So, and Joe, I know you said you, there was a meeting today, I think, right? So maybe in the next couple of months, although I know it gets busy, but we should probably try to figure out where we go next.
Yeah, as Dr. Carpenter mentioned earlier, we, meaning me, Kathleen is our finance director, my counterpart's with Jill, and her new finance director coming on board in a couple weeks, meet with the superintendent and the business manager. So each of the three parties with an administrative officer and a finance officer. We've resumed our activities, we meet regularly, at least monthly. But what we get into is really the, the nitty-gritty of the hobby, you know, the budget building, and what do you see coming down the pike for your town versus school system, et cetera. I think what I'm hearing and what we are talking about is a broader audience. And I, and I will go back to your former colleague, Mary Anderson. As you all know, this is your first single-issue board meeting, so to speak. And it was intentionally to be this one, because it's one of the biggest ones that we have to grapple with. But the expectation that I think Mary had after this was that there would be an outreach from the missing elements, so to speak, from the finance meetings, and that is representatives from the two executive bodies. Because we do have a representative from the school committee executive body, so that's, that's covered, to see if all parties are willing to get into a room and further the discussions.
I think that's important. Mark?
Hi, Mark Kelleher, West Howard. I'm speaking as a resident taxpayer, not as a member of the finance committee. And what, first of all, I want to thank Charles for this. He's our Ted Williams for the town, bringing this to the fore. And I want to thank Mary Anderson, because she brought this meeting to fore. I want to appreciate that. But this agreement, as we're talking about, is really important for the town, the Montomoy schools, and the students. But even though Charles makes a great case and it makes great fiscal sense, you know, we don't know what Chatham thinks. It's not a foregone conclusion that they're going to think it's a good idea. Tim Wood of the Chronicle in the spring came out against this change. You know, they had a very tough time with their council on aging building was approved. So I think there's a very core group in Chatham that will not go for this, and that's why it's important that the selectmen here go out and outreach and get a lay of the land in Chatham. Jeff Dykens is a very reasonable guy, he's a selectman in Chatham, as the superintendent will say. Corey Metters, I would suggest for the next two or three weeks, some of the selectmen have coffee with them, get a lay of the land. They may say, "Doesn't look good," based on their sense of the town, but at least get a sense of what, what's going on there. The other thing is, it's so important for the town and the school finances, we want to avoid a situation where we have even a hint of, "We're not going to offer the services." And I'll tell you why. NOSIT has got two or three hundred million dollars into their new school. If we're not maintaining educational equality, especially for Chatham parents, they'll go to NOSIT, and then we've got a downward spiral. So I have to say, this is a very important topic, and I wouldn't wait. If I was a selectman, I would be calling, going along with some of my fellow board members, calling up Jeff Dykens, calling up Corey Metters, Mike Schell, "Let's have coffee, let's get a feel of what's this going to take." Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be really clear, because, I mean, Charles has pointed this out before too, we're not the ones who are trying to push our own agenda here. I'm trying to avoid a train wreck, ultimately. And it's pretty clear from the numbers that that's exactly where we're heading, and we've got a great school system. It is so much easier to maintain one than it is to build one. And if we allow this to get to, because the complacency is really going to be our problem. We are not hitting on the heads of the collective select board in Chatham to say, "Hey, we want more money." It's not about that. It's just that the citizenry may come to the point where they revolt and say, "I'm sorry, you promised us savings, but it actually cost us fifty million dollars. Where's the savings?" I mean, there's got to be a discussion about this, and it's not motivated by us getting annoyed or jumping up and down and holding our breath. It's really about the money, and it's about, "Do you want to play Russian roulette with this?" It's a serious discussion, and it can't end with, "Well, we're doing good, so we're fine." It has to end with a serious discussion about, "How do we do this so that it's fair for both towns and that the kids don't get held hostage anywhere?"
Yeah, and I mean, I think you can see from this board and past boards that we've always supported the schools. That's why we have such a great school system, and I don't think you're hearing anywhere on this board that anyone wants to not support the schools. But to Don's point, you know, how do we go forward? Charles?
If I could just make a couple of points about the formula that I haven't really emphasized in some past communications, or too much publicly. You've seen the data that I've called, actually called from school department data, it's put together. When the district was being formed, there was no accurate projection. There was a guess that was all going to work nicely, and I think the guess was, with time, both towns are going to have to pay more to educate their kids, just as a result of inflation and increasing needs. And that was going to be proportional, probably based on population. Now we're so many years down the road, twelve, thirteen years down the road, and we have data. Now we're so many years down the road, 12, 13 years down the road, and we have data. Now we don't have projection, we actually have data to show this is what happened as a result of the formula. So now we know how the formula has worked. One of the, one of the issues here is affordability of towns. And it's supposed to be, according to the state, a consideration when they deal with their reimbursement back. And so we get the, the, the local contribution figure. And one of the issues is that the state intention, I was there when all this education reform stuff was being formed back in 1993. I was lobbying legislators. I was testifying before Joint Education Committee of the Legislature and my local congresspeople. But, but one of the intentions was that affordability was supposed to be a factor when, when calculating out these formulas for, for budgeting. The way it works out is, and again, Dr. Carpenter, Mr. McMillan, correct me, but there's a, a limit that both towns are meeting on that affordability factor. Meaning that even if Chatham had more affordability, there is a ceiling and both towns hit the ceiling. So that means whatever additional affordability is there in Chatham is canceled out. And basically, the minimum contribution, local contribution comes down to student enrollment and no other fact. It's not the intention of the state, but the state is working. Now, it's not Chatham that's asked the state to do that. It's the way the state has done it and we can try to change the state, but I tell you, it's a lot easier to try something local as hard as it is than to try to convince the state to do business in, in a, in a different manner. But that's a big factor because what it does is, it means that Harwich winds up paying above the local contribution, a higher amount than it would if Chatham was really paying the local contribution that those affordability factors without a ceiling were worked in. I think that's important. Not many people know that. I didn't know that in, in a chance conversation with superintendent. I found that out a couple of years ago. And I, I, all the years I've been studying school budgeting, I wasn't aware. So that's a critical factor. And, and so affordability is meant to be a, a variable by the part of the state. Now, most of the districts formed by student enrollment, because that sounds like a very fair way to do things. Well, a number of students, number of services share the costs that way. And that's the way most regional agreements were formed. However, there are other, other fairer ways to look at it that can build in affordability and population factors. And I've shown you in the past that there is a disparity between property valuation in the two towns. And, and the majority of that valuation goes to the other town. There is a disparity in terms of, there isn't 75, 25, or 76, 24 breakout in total population of the towns. There is a 67, 33% breakout. So what we have is one town that has, the last time I checked, 45% of property evaluation, which is the ability to raise and fund all town services, including schools. And two-thirds of the population, total population is paying 75% of the cost of educating the students in both towns. What Manchester Essex has done, just for you, it's not all the detail, not all the weeds, but basically, they've looked at a budget in three parts and actually it makes sense. They look at a capital budget, they look at a non-instructional operating budget, and they look at instructional budget. And I've been thinking about this. Why, why did this disparity occur between Harwich and Chatham? Why is this huge gap? And I think it's because what Chatham has benefited from is the fact that they don't have to fund the full cost of all their capital expenditure. They don't have to fund the full cost of transporting. If they ran, if each town ran its own school system, you'd have to pick up the full boat of those costs. What Manchester Essex, when they were putting their agreement together, looked at and said, capital costs, let's break that down into two. Let's break that half and half between property valuation of the two towns and total population of the two towns by, according to the latest census. In the latest census, nothing's changed, it's 67, 33, Harwich-Chatham. So they take their capital part of the budget and they split it up and say, okay, let's, let's split that part up, half of it by the percentage of the property valuation of the two towns, half by the total population. Then they take their non-instructional operating costs and they do a similar breakout using, again, property valuation and total population. Only in the instructional operating costs, which is the classroom, which is servicing the number of students you have, only in that category of the budget are they actually working student enrollment figures in. And even there, they take 25% of that portion of the budget based on property valuation and they take the other 75% and that's the only part of the budget that they take. But if you stop and think about it, it, it is an argument that could be made that that is a fair way to look at apportioning your costs. It's kind of the argument you probably were following when Dennis and Yarmuth were trying to build the new middle school and they were really going at it. And there was the concern saying, well, you know, this part of the building is going to serve us, you know, all kids and let's not break it down by population. It's, it's, you have to have that part of the building for whatever kids you're, you're educating in your community. And, and so that, that's really, I'm just trying to help you frame when you talk to people, you know, on the other side of the fence, you know, that there are other ways than just saying strictly, because that is in a way, a fair way, student enrollment, but it really doesn't factor the fact that if Harwich was by itself, they would have to fund its entire capital cost. It would have to fund all of the transportation. And what's hap, and the reason of that gapping, I think, I don't know, but I'm, I'm thinking it's because Chatham's been able to have Harwich pick up a significant enough amount of the transportation and the capital costs that's less than it would have cost them if they still had to continue maintaining their own school district. I don't know how clear I'm being about that or if I'm being sensitive, but I think those were important points. The other thing I noted in a, in an article in the Chronicle back in the spring, they were talking about the financial situation of Chatham. And I noted, it said that Chatham, 19% of its total budget was both schools. The Montemoy budget and the technical school budget made up 19% of the town budget. The Montemoy budget alone for Harwich, I think, is about over 50%. Correct me, you know, but it's, it's much different than 19%. So the two towns are in a very different affordability situation and it's the kids that are going to be impacted in the middle. And so the argument says, Mr. Howell says, it's not that Harwich is trying to impose or trying to get out of, it's, it's a concern for what could happen down the road that would put our, our partner town in a very difficult situation of saying, why did we ever get into this? They're cutting the programs, they're, the class sizes, and we've got the money to, to do something about it and we can't do it because we're locked in to the formula that we have.
Joe?
Not, not to correct, but I, I think to add some structure around some of what Charles just said. For the town of Harwich, our, our Article IV, our operating budget, which is all of our departments and then some other things like debt, et cetera, we came in at 43.3 million in this, for this fiscal year. If, if I have the numbers correct, the, the district came in at 38.1 million. I think more importantly, and what you were getting at, Charles, it's, it's not 50% or it's, it's not equal yet. But if you just look at what dollar amount are our departments? So that is the lifeblood of what we do. That's 30.7 million. And then we paid 28.4 million for our education department. And so I think that's the way that I've looked at it. That's where that 2.2 million or so delta, that's where it becomes scary. Because this is what it costs for us to do our programs and our services versus what we're paying for the educational program.
No, I think that, and you know, in attending MI, the MMA, there's been different workshops that you sit in those and you say, I have no idea. Like the numbers come from here to there and nothing makes sense. And I just, you know, I think that that, every, every member should probably have some sort of cheat sheet on that to try to really look at that when you're looking at the school budget. Because it's, it's really mesmerizing. A lot of these numbers don't make sense, but then Scott can probably tell you or Michael, how they all interconnected.
Or the hobbyist.
Yeah, yeah. Or Charles. So I don't know, I just think that the more information, the better, but I also think the more communication, the better. And to that point, I think everybody here tonight has expressed the fact that we're not looking to say, hey, give us more money. It's more like, we have to assess the situation because we want to continue to have a strong school system. And, you know, it, it's been a work in progress and it's been remarkable and it's doing great things for all of our kids. So I, I don't think there's anybody in either town that wants to dismantle it, but how do we figure it out moving forward? So thanks for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Sorry, Don?
Wait, before you close it down, what, what do we do after we leave the room?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, I was going to finish that sentence, but. So what I, what I think we need to do is what I said earlier, which is to work with Joe to come up with the next meeting where we can have a discussion. Maybe it's a joint meeting with the school committee. I think, I'm looking for feedback on that, if you guys think that's the best venue. But, you know, it's not as easy as a couple of us going here and there and having coffee because then if three of us go, we've got an issue and so, you know, we don't, we don't need that problem. So Joe, what are you thinking about the, your next conversation with your cohorts over on the other side?
Well, I think as soon as my counterpart Jill has her finance director onboard, it's an easy outreach to, for our group. I mean, we did talk earlier today. We do meet every month, but it doesn't have to be monthly. It's, we're not, you know, we don't have to be 30 days apart, so we can certainly do that. I'd also defer to Dr. Carpenter, if he has any thoughts on that. But as far as our core meeting, we can, we're flexible, we can meet as needed.
Okay.
And as quickly as possible.
Yeah, so what, what do you think, Scott?
I don't want to necessarily speak for the chair, but I, we. The voice of Doug, the voice from above. The, the school committee has, as one of their goals this year, to at least start conversations about challenges that, you know, that the towns are having and districts having. Again, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're providing that, you know, that great educational program, good fiscal stewards, but also landing the plane, you know, where it's, it's in the wherewithal of both towns. And, you know, so as part of that school committee goal was to, you know, start a conversation with the finance team that is the, what Joe described, but to bring in the chair and vice chair of the school committee, which is a Harwich and Chatham person, and bring in both chairs to start a conversation there and then brainstorm as that group on what's that, you know, what, how could we get a bigger conversation going? Much the same, you know, kind of along the lines that, you know, that Mark was bringing up, you know?
Yeah.
Get that pulse.
I think we should do that. We can start there. Yeah, and we should probably try to get that, you know, going in the next month or so, so we can take off from there and just have more open communication about it. I'm happy to start an email and. Great. Where all the dates fall. All right. No, that'd be, that'd be very helpful. I appreciate that, Meredith. Okay. Anybody have any other discussions?
Thank you for being here.
Thanks a lot again. Thanks for coming. Take care. Have a good evening. You too.
You too.
Good night. Doctor Carpenter. Scott works. I think we're in the tackle shop.
Correspondence, we don't have any. Oh, we don't have selectmen's report on here, so can we just skip that?
I think we're, I think we're safe doing selectmen's report because we're not going to debate.
You never know.
I don't think anyone logged in just to listen to the selectmen's report. I'd like to think so, but I don't think so. I only have one thing that I was going to ask of you, Julie, and it is, given that we have four board members, meeting attendance is going to be extremely important. And I would ask that we talk to council and figure out how we are going to have two Zoom links so that members can Zoom into executive session. I do have some travel that will require me not to be here, but I will be able to link in. And on executive session, at least to date, I don't believe we've ever offered a separate link for executive session and we should.
Good idea, yeah. All right, I'll follow up.
And then I would imagine next week it would be appropriate for the board to at least start talking, but.
Excuse me.
Hopefully finish the reorganization of the board.
Yeah.
And a budget message.
Well, the budget message is going to be on the next one.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Jeff, anything?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Don?
I was at quarantine, but he did give me a text.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.